My name is Art Whitman, Chair of the Shasbury Select Board, and I'd like to bring this meeting of the Shasbury Select Board to order on January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four at six thirty-one P M. The first thing I'd like to announce is that items number twelve and thirteen on the agenda, which are the F Y F Y two thousand twenty-five budget and the town meeting warning will not be discussed this evening, but we will be entering into executive session for personnel towards the end of the meeting. So after that, does anybody else have a conflict of interest with anything shown on the agenda?
No.
No.
Mike?
No.
Okay.
Uh, was it? I didn't print out the minutes.
The minutes, uh, should we skip that for now then, or should I just?
No, there's no minutes. Uh, so the next, the next thing on the agenda would be warrants. Mike, if you would read the, the warrants, please.
All right, I've got the first warrant here is check warrant number twenty-seven. If I can read the, uh, the large ones.
Uh, but let me take, uh, uh, I'll, I'll take a motion to approve them. Then you read the ones.
Still moved.
Move by Naomi. Was there a second to that?
Second.
A second by Martha. Uh, so please read the, uh, items over a thousand dollars, Mike.
We have, uh, N K Agro Services for thirty-one hundred ninety-three dollars and thirty-two cents, Aflac for a thousand fifteen dollars ninety-eight cents, Apache Salt, three thousand and one dollar forty cents, Bearcom, thirty-three hundred and forty-five dollars and twelve cents.
That's, uh, fire the public radios.
We've got G A Bo Fuels for thirteen hundred and seven dollars and seventy cents. Nimmerk, uh, twelve hundred and eleven, eleven dollars twenty-five cents. R C S Consulting, twelve hundred and three dollars forty-five cents. And V R S Sales Limited, thirty-five hundred and eighty-nine dollars thirty-two cents.
That's fired for crock of, uh, work.
And that's it for large items.
And is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? So carried four zero zero. Dave, do you need more than one signature on them?
No, one signature will be fine.
Okay.
We'll correct it later.
All right, I've got a, there's another Shasbury check warrant number twenty-eight for the Vermont Roofing Company repair on this building, I assume. Uh,
Yeah.
Four hundred and sixty-three dollars twenty-five cents.
This is a twenty-five percent deposit, uh, to be scheduled. We had, uh, damage to the roof during the windstorm last week.
Uh, entertain a motion to accept, to, to pay.
So moved.
Moved by Mike.
Second.
Second by Martha. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? So carried four zero zero.
And we have check warrant report, it calls itself, number three A, uh, it's for a V Mears. Is that what I'm reading?
A V Mears, that's the retirement, uh, money.
All right, it's a retirement, uh, check for fifteen thousand and eight dollars fifty-six cents.
Entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
Moved by Martha, second by Naomi. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? So carried four zero zero.
And tomorrow we have payroll warrant number fourteen.
Mike, the payroll actual amount is down in the bottom and it's usually highlighted.
This area?
That is.
Oh, I see. Yeah.
Right there. Yep.
Uh, yeah, twenty-six thousand three hundred and ninety-four dollars nine cents.
Entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
Moved by Naomi.
Second.
Second by Martha. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? So carried four zero zero.
And finally, payroll warrant, uh, thirteen, and the number here is twenty-nine thousand three hundred and forty-nine dollars thirty-one cents.
Entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
Moved by Martha.
Second.
Second by Naomi. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? So carried four zero zero.
And does this, do we need this as part of?
No, that's just, uh, goes back to me.
Oh.
Thank you, Mike.
All right.
Okay, uh, next on the agenda is announcements. Uh, the first one that I have is that anybody that wants to, uh, have a petition entered in for, uh, elected office, it has to be to the town clerk by January twenty-ninth. Uh, we're looking for committee members for, uh, the town green. Coal Hall, uh, work on Coal Hall, sewer feasibility study, and the Economic Development Committee needs members. So if anybody, uh, we ask that you send a very brief file to the administrator. And, uh, you'll certainly be considered. Uh, any other, does anybody else have any other public comments?
Uh, this Thursday, the Benton County Regional Commission will be having its monthly meeting. We're hosting it here at Coal Hall at five thirty P M. Uh, light dinner will be provided from five thirty to six. Uh, public hearings on the Woodford Town Plan, the Sunderland Town Plan, uh, presentation on the Shasbury Economic Development Efforts with Martha Cornwell and other members of the committee, and an update from the Benton Housing Committee, Zach Hale and other members of that committee.
Thank you, Martha, for doing that.
Yep, sure.
That it? Okay. Uh, public comments, do we have anybody from the public either on Zoom or in person?
No, there's no one here, all right.
Okay. Um, treasures report, do you have that, Dave?
Yep. We even have a treasure, okay. We have a treasure receipt.
Oh goodness, aye.
Um, let's look at the cash flow first. There's almost nothing new since I was here last. Um, there was the, the, uh, we were there.
I know, every time I have to start recording.
You, you may recall that there was that, that issue with somebody who was, um, um, who got the refund twice last year, and we, yeah, that special, um, arrangement, uh, so that she could pay us back sort of outside of the system. Um, that, that taxpayer has, has now, um, taken care of that, so, so that's, um, uh, going to be all fine for the next time we're audited. That was a load off my mind, and I was very grateful that that worked out okay. So you, uh, you see that, um, a couple of taxes that I'm calling on time, even though they, they came obviously very much after the due date, but, uh, we've got so much paperwork on it, I'm sure it's gonna be okay with Jordan. Um, so that's the only thing that's happened up there, I think, since, um, the last meeting. So we want to go down. Um, you'll see our cash as of today, um, probably strikes you a little on the low side. If it doesn't, it should, but the reason for that is that there's a lot of money that's owed to the General Fund from, uh, reserves from a bunch of pretty big checks that you, you guys have authorized in the last few months. So I'm hoping at the next meeting, um, that will be the cash position will be all figured out with getting all the money in the correct funds. Um, that's just a sort of an artifact of how busy it is in towards the end of the year. But we'll take care of that for next time. Any questions about any of that?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll take a quick look at reserves. Um, this, I don't think there's anything new here either, just a little bit of extra water payments that have come through. Um, all of those credits you see in that, um, the credit column, I think we talked about that last time. That's all of the, um, voter approved transfers to reserves. So that's what those even, um, thousands of dollar transfers are. That's what that is. Um, I think that I don't have anything else to, to add to that, if anybody has any questions.
No, thank you.
Fine, thank you very much.
Sorry.
Okay, um, okay, the, uh, last meeting, I think it was, we talked about the screening ordinance proposed by the, uh, Planning Commission. Uh, I think there were some recommendations and, uh, Ma- uh, Naomi, is that part of your?
Um, yes, but unfortunately, I'm on a different, I, I, I can't share it, um, and I'm wondering if David can.
My, uh, Adobe crashed this morning, and it's not functioning at all, especially when I'm detached from the, uh, the system like this.
Okay, um, and my, I, I didn't have internet until about an hour ago, so I don't really understand what's happening on my computer, but it's not doing what it should.
Okay.
Uh, we, yeah, what ought to be in front of us is what David sent out that had the, um, the changes that Mike had suggested. Um, if anybody can call it up on their computer, it would be great if, um, Martha, are you?
I'm, I'm working on it right now.
Thank you, I'm really sorry.
Trying to find it.
She. David sent it out maybe what, David, three days ago?
Yeah, last week, uh,
Yeah, I'm working on trying to.
Yeah.
Grab it, and somehow it's not in. I'm wondering if it was in one of the ones that you sent multiples, and that's why I cannot find it right now.
I think it was just it. Um, it said solar screening ordinance.
Okay. Oh, here we go, screening. I have pulled it. Uh, yes, I've got it up. What would you like me to read?
Uh,
just the part was in, I think, B, I think was the screening requirements, I think was the change, which had said, "All solar facilities with a production capacity in excess of sixty kilowatt" parentheses A C shall be screened following the requirements outlined in this ordinance. "The Town of Shasbury Select Board shall determine screening requirements and associated site issues for each above-mentioned solar facility based on the standards in this ordinance. The Select Board may request recommendations from the Town of Shasbury Planning Commission or any other boards or advisory groups appointed by the Select Board." Was that the?
No, it was about the timing. Um, I guess it was the next paragraph where it says, um, that that, uh, the special committee will be appointed by the Select Board, made up of representatives of the town, committed five town committees, and they will be standing in for us, the average person, and it was about, we added a sentence about.
A line, and I don't think the one that he sent in this one is the correct one then, uh, because it doesn't have that line. Um,
It's a long version of the line, it was at the bottom of one of the paragraphs.
Right, I, and I know exactly what you're talking about now, and that's not the correct one, so I apologize. Um, that was the last one that said screening ordinance, um, in my email. Um, and that was from one twenty-seven. But I don't see one any more recently than that.
I'm trying to find it on my phone. But the town uh, email doesn't always work on the phone. I guess we're gonna have to table this until the next meeting, I'm so sorry.
Uh, well, it's, it's, it's just an ordinance anyways, there's no, nothing that we take. We don't act on it as a, as a, uh, as a board, it's, it's an ordinance, we gotta go through the whole process of, of warning it and all that sort of stuff.
Right.
We need to have it right, okay?
Okay.
Right.
Sorry to waste your time.
Well, it's okay. Uh, the next on the agenda is the host town agreement. Uh, I cope, did you all get something within the last hour, about after four o'clock or something like that?
Yeah.
So at our last meeting, we tabled a motion to sign the host town agreement so we could have discussion. So I think the proper procedure is, I need a motion to untable it or to, or to o- open it up for discussion again because there already is a motion, so all we need is to, a motion to reopen it, I think is the right phrase. And then we can discuss it.
So I motioned to reopen the, um, previously, uh, tabled, um, discussion on this uh, host town agreement for Shasbury Solar.
Okay, I have a motion by Martha, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Naomi. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? So carried four zero zero. Okay, so at the last meeting, there were two recommendations, um, and this is why we tabled it. One was they wanted specifically what parts of East Road could be used and could not be used. Uh, that is in there. It, it says everything from the intersection of of, um, Holy Smoke Road south is what they can only use, so that prevents them from coming in from Arlington on the dirt road and so on and so forth. And six B was further clarified. So this was, uh, gone over by Merrill, Merrill then sent it to them, and what we have back with their signature on it is the one that they agreed to, which I sent to you a little after four o'clock.
Great.
Any discussion? Do, do we think that this satisfies what we talked about the last meeting?
I think so, and I think they're good changes.
This, this does not mean what this, what this does by, uh, I, the way Merrill explained it to me is that we are not undercutting uh, other people's ability to object to something. Where all we're saying is this goes, this conforms to our town plan. And our town plan does not say anything about closeness to neighbors or anything else like that. We're leaving that up to them to do their own uh, objection to it, okay? And, and of course, the roads are a big concern, and I think that's being taken care of very nicely by both the cutoff and restrictions that we've specifically said, so any other? Anybody else got any concerns or comments? Okay, if this is a rather important document, so I would like a roll call vote. Um, so, uh, so that it's on the record because it just takes one signature. I will go to Staples or someplace, have this document printed off, sign it, and send it back to Merrill, who will then pass it on if that's the way we want to proceed. So, uh, I guess, uh, I'll start with Mike. Are you in favor of this?
Aye.
Uh, Martha?
Aye.
Naomi?
Aye.
I also vote aye, so that's so carried four zero zero. Thank you. This was a long one. Yes.
I would just like to thank David for his, all his work on this, um, and his, and his really creative um, wordsmithing and problem solving at our last meeting about this.
Absolutely. Yep, I agree. Okay, wow, that, that's over. Okay, um, I understand we have some appointments for the, uh, Planning Commission, is that right, Dave?
And I'd like to add on the Economic Development Committee, because we've had an African, uh, there that Mark can cover tonight.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, Naomi, why don't you start with the Planning Commission?
Okay, so, um, Emily Calporth Wade, who I believe was gonna try to be here, but maybe she was unable to. Um, maybe she doesn't have internet now, but she is, uh, has been serving on the Economic Development Committee and has expressed interest in the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission, um, reviewed her credentials and her letter and recommends her um, to the Select Board for appointment. I, she, she seems to be a sort of proven entity, she's new to town, but she's, um, been on the Economic Development Committee and seems committed to the town and bringing a, a fresh perspective.
And I would just second that, that she, um, has been a very big help on the Economic Development Committee and, um, had expressed some interest about being on the Planning Commission. Um, her partner, uh, Zoe is on the Development Review Board, so really, I think, uh, family that's very interested in being, uh, of service to the town, and I think doing a great job on the respective boards that they're on at the moment.
So somebody want to, we need a motion, don't we, Dave, to accept these?
You need a motion, yes.
Okay, somebody please make a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to appoint Emily Caputhwick to the Planning Commission for, is it a three-year term or?
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
I have a motion, uh, motion by Mike, a second by Martha. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? So carried four zero zero. Next.
Um, so I have the pleasure of, um, introducing Sharie Miller, who is a fairly new resident of Shasbury. She lives on Horton Hill Road. Um, she has a very strong background, um, in web design and graphic design, um, and, uh, has some, uh, abilities for fundraising as well, and she has expressed interest in, um, becoming part of the Economic Development Committee at a very good time because we're just starting, um, our thoughts about all the grants, and we have to do some crowdfunding and community, uh, fundraising, and I think she'd be an excellent, um, candidate, and with Emily moving, um, off of one board and onto another, there is a open position, um, on the Economic Development Committee. Uh, and so I think, uh, Sharie would make an excellent, um, person to, to take over, and is very enthusiastic about living here in Shasbury. She and her husband moved here, um, and are really interested in, in getting involved in the town.
Okay. Uh, somebody want to make a motion?
I'll mo- I'll, uh, move to appoint Sharie Miller to the Economic Development Committee.
Have a motion by Naomi.
Second that.
Second by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? So carried four zero zero. Is that it?
Yes, that's, that's it.
That's it, okay. Okay, next is the real estate purchase. We have a signed contract by myself and the co-owners of the property that we're buying behind Coal Hall. It's at forty-three Buck Hill Road. It sits, it's a house that sits on point eight six acres. Uh, the contract stipulates that the sale will not happen until April fifteenth, at which time the occupants will move out. Um, and we have pretty much, and this is with ARPA money, uh, which we have the discretion, the Select Board has a discretion to use, but I also think it's important that the public know about it and has, has a, um, opportunity to weigh in. Uh, so normally, it's been at least three meetings, so we will announce this at the next three Selectments meeting. And, uh, the sale will go through on the fifteenth if nothing comes up. Any discussion or anything? I don't think there's any motion. We've already decided that that's what we wanted to do. We have the contract and so on and so forth, so everybody comfortable with that?
Absolutely.
Yes, thank you, Art, for, um, being the point person on that one.
Between, um, our point person opening up the store and everything, it was a, it was a chase, but, no, it, it worked out very well. Thank you. Okay, uh, we're skipping the next two. Uh, Department of D P W report, Dave, do you have something other than their pow- powics now?
Yeah, it's, it's snowing, so, uh, one will be here for D P W tonight. Um, essentially, that's what they've been waiting for, is just gearing up, doing some roadside cleanups. Of course, they had a very busy night and day with the storm last week, lots of trees down, lots and lots of things to pick up. And, uh, today, they've just been working on this, and there'll probably be cleanups for this tomorrow, uh, but it's that season where this will be the main focus.
I guess I just kind of want to emphasize that this is the reason we're talking about trees now, is because these storms, I think, as they become more severe, um, it becomes a problem. I know Coal Spring Road was without power for fifteen hours, and I'm sure other places in town were without too because the tree's coming down and that sort of stuff, so we need to take a look at that. Okay? Uh, Dave has been doing a, a lot of, uh, pre-planning for us for this transition. Uh, he sent out something, I think you all received it. Uh, the liaison uh, document, plus he's kind of done a timeline of when of, of how emails are gonna be handled, how, uh, that sort of stuff. So we need to kind of talk about that. Dave, can you pull some of that up, what you've been talking about?
No, because my Adobe crashed and, uh,
Okay.
if it just continues to crash, I don't know what happened to it, I'm gonna have to get a new one or.
Okay, but did everybody receive that?
I have it up in case we, we have questions. Um, Dave, one of the things that I, um, just wanted to clarify, um, under the option of ARPA, I think I was going to be the point person, but you had listed Art as the point person, so I just wanted to clarify.
No, that's right, it was gonna be you, and essentially, uh, that, that probably nothing will come up in the end of time, but you'll have all the contacts in case it does. The next report is due in April.
Right, okay.
Don't worry, but yeah, I'll switch, I'll switch that back.
Just so that it's the correct, um, person.
Thank you, Martha.
And for emails and phone calls, uh, I think the easiest thing, I talked to, uh, R C S last week, is to create a new email, Shasbury Select Board, uh, which the administrator emails will all be forwarded to that mailbox, and that mailbox can be accessed by one of the select persons who will then, uh, distribute the emails, uh, as they see fit to be taken care of, and, uh, it would just be my suggestion until Art gets back, that should be the, the, uh, Vice Chair, Tony does it. Uh, it's not, uh, the most important part would just be assigning the emails as they come in. A lot of them are junk, like everybody else's email. Uh, and then I'll, I'll have, uh, the code for the phone, uh, so that he can just check the messages on my phone line every day. Uh, and again, because almost all my communication is email, uh, there's very few phone calls. But sometimes people do leave questions on it and, uh, things like that, so, uh, I don't think it'd be uh, tremendous, because it really wouldn't be answering a lot of emails, a lot would go to Mike. Uh tremendous, because we really wouldn't be answering a lot of emails, a lot would go to Mike, uh. Uh Marlene, to the Assessor's Office, to the Treasurer, and uh the different people who are assigned as liaisons to different departments. So the whole burden wouldn't be on him to answer all these or address them, it just forwards them to who they should go to. But I don't wanna change the whole thing, because whoever follows in my steps, I mean, the administrator email is like with everybody in the state. So we don't wanna be chained to that.
Right.
Um the phone is the just a phone, just give him the code, he can just dial in, I have a passcode for my phone and he can uh. You know, get the messages.
So that's a remote access, um he can remotely access the phone?
Yeah, so it doesn't require any trip here, it can all be done from from home.
Did you speak to him about it?
No, he's he's not around today, I'm not sure what's going on, but uh it's for the board, I'm just volunteering the member who's not here, but uh.
I I I I will ask, I I talked to him last week and he had a doctor's appointment. Himself yesterday and another one for his wife today, so he said he couldn't be able to make it, but. I'll I'll check with him tomorrow and just tell him what uh what we talked about, if not, I'll get back to you and we'll come up with another plan, okay? But I think he, it it isn't that he's gotta answer everything, he's just gotta make sure it goes to the right person.
Uh exactly, it's really just someone to check and see what's there. Uh and then if you go through the rest of it, uh. Just look, there's contacts for everything I've thought up so far, who will be contacting, I'm gonna notify all those people that. You are the respective contacts for these different projects. Uh none of them should be overwhelming, because most of them are in the design phase, or like Grandview Sidewalk is is finished, it's just. Gonna have to have a public hearing, uh which probably won't happen until March anyway. Just check the liaison assignments again, because I did move some today. There's a few things like, oh, I took a few from you, like media and those things, because you're you're away and. We haven't really had a media event here in nine and a half years, don't anticipate one, but should one happen, it'd be better if it was someone who was here.
Okay.
Just in case, uh.
Yep.
And just a few others, changes, and again, everybody's, the key people you should keep in contact with are all highlighted. And those people will all be notified, or they all have been notified, I believe, who their contact is from the board. And uh so that any questions that come up can be sent to you. And then we're down to simple things like the the transfer station lost power this weekend. Uh it's helpful for them to be able to tell whoever the liaison is, because I got a lot of phone calls and. Emails about the dump closing early, but the power went out right after they got there and. After they waited an hour or so, Green Mountain told me they didn't know when or if it would go on the rest of the day, so. It was really cold, so they left.
And I stopped in there today to do my regular dump run and said uh. Had a conversation with Shelley about how to sort of keep that on the loop and.
Perfect, okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Can I, can I ask um just about the meeting agendas and the Zoom and things like that, and who's going to, I I know. You've got Shelley and Jen on various meetings um running the Zoom and things like that, but who is generating the agenda? And and sending out kind of the packet materials?
Jen, uh Shelley will uh do the agendas and send out any material that comes up. Uh Art will still put together the agenda, it just has to be sent to or. Yeah, it'll be basically Art will put together the agenda, if you have anything you want on the agenda, you should contact.
Subjected Art, okay, I just clarified, um okay.
Yeah, and now we will have to have the agenda, Art will have to send the agenda. Uh or approve the agenda by the Wednesday before the meeting.
Yes, okay.
Without 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 me here, so we'll have the agendas done a little bit early, but it really shouldn't be that big a a deal.
And I guess that means that Tony and Art will need to be in touch as well. Um because Tony, I guess, could be aware of some stuff, Art, that needed to be on the agenda that you wouldn't know about.
Yep, you're right, okay, thank you, Naomi.
Yeah, it's gonna take uh communication between everybody to make sure we get on what it is, and of course, Tony will take care of. Everything to do with town meeting.
Right. And uh it it shows that we're gonna have a special meeting uh on January twenty ninth. Um and is that for making sure that we've got all the budget and town meeting stuff?
Uh that's. It's essentially just to pay bills.
Oh, okay.
Happen there, so it's really just a bill paying meeting unless something comes up.
Okay.
But we do have to, we do have to have a sp- we have to have a special meeting to to do the budget and the town meeting.
That's what I wondered.
Oh, that's gonna have to be no later than Monday.
The twenty-second, you mean, Monday, the twenty-second?
Monday, yeah.
Okay.
And that that will be a a five-minute meeting too, actually, because everybody's seen all this stuff. But I have to be able to change it.
Okay.
Dave, when is your last day exactly, literally?
Uh well, this Friday, I'm forwarding all communications. And I'll be here next Monday and Tuesday to just kind of clean out and try to arrange files for. People to follow me and uh but I wanna switch the communications at the end of this week. Just in case there's any glitch, we can get it cleared up, but uh Tuesday afternoon will uh definitely be my last. Uh time and uh I'm gonna be out of the country within forty-eight hours, so. So I wanna make sure.
Be there after four o'clock.
So that's Tuesday.
Um my only other question, uh just looking at this uh agenda uh or just listings. Um when we get the ballot together, um. Is that something that one of the select board people are going to have to work with Marlene on um before it? Yeah.
You mean the town warning, the meeting warning?
Well, that, but also, don't don't we usually see a draft of the what's gonna be on the ballot and then um. Before it goes to the printers?
No, our warning goes to uh, the warning just goes to Marlene to be included in the book, it's it's your meeting. The ballot is is Marlene's, but uh any anyone uh can talk to Marlene about that, uh but.
Okay, I just thought there was somebody that, and it was usually you, that kind of just made sure everything was all together before.
Well, yeah, like. Yes, the warning that you sign is exactly what's going to go in the book, the questions are exactly what are gonna go on the ballot.
Oh, okay.
So that's the important part of the warning.
Got it, okay.
Okay, any other comments at this time, I'm sure there's gonna be lots of other things coming up.
Yeah, just email me as you think of things, I'm sure I've forgotten something.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, uh next thing is other business. Think, Dave, you had something?
Yes, we've had, um as you all know, Joan is leaving. Uh probably now at the end of the month, not as quickly as originally uh thought. But uh we don't have any time to recruit someone, and I'm a little hesitant to hire someone as I'm walking out the door. Uh I think it'd be best to leave for the new administrator or uh the select board to decide. Uh however, we have a critical service, so my proposal is, we've had Tony Rome, she has her own accounting and tax services. And a few times to sit with Joan to see what needs to be done, uh to keep basically the machine moving. And uh she has made a proposal to provide that service on a month-to-month basis, for eight hundred and fifty dollars a month. Which is pretty much matched to our budget line anyway. So uh it's it's just a critical thing that there's there's no option, we have to have someone to do it, the banner uh. Got our wires crossed, I actually put put an ad in the paper for it. So those people who submitted applications, I'm just gonna put to the side until we get someone to replace me, and then that person can interview for who's going to be. Uh replacing Joan, uh I think it's better that way. Uh and I don't have time left to interview people anyway, so. But Tony can sit in for the crucial February, March. And hopefully uh we'll have someone on board in April, but she's very experienced. Yeah, this is what she needs to do here, there's nothing unusual for her, so it should work out pretty smoothly.
Did you get some applicants from the banner advertisement?
I've got two.
Okay, interesting, okay then.
Uh yeah, like I said, we uh we got our wires crossed somehow, I meant the whole back, but it went out anyway.
Okay, just curious.
People let them know, that we'll put them on file and and we'll get to them after things get tidied up here.
Okay.
But I'll need a motion to uh so I can sign an agreement with uh Tony Rome Accounting and Tax Services to provide. Uh those services, uh the bookkeeper services of Shasberry for a monthly fee of eight hundred and fifty dollars. Per month.
I can uh make a motion that we hire Tony Ro- Rome for this purpose.
That's a motion by Mike.
Second.
Second by Naomi, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so carried four zero zero. Any other business?
Yeah, one other thing I wanna bring up was um. Something that's we've been trying to figure out for years, when I got here, we were installing a generator at at the school. For the emergency shelter, uh I always questioned this and it took a while off and on, but uh the school is not an emergency shelter. It never has been, and it's not listed by the Red Cross. Uh we pay several hundred dollars a year for it to be serviced, and I just got another thousand dollar bill to re- repair. Do some e- extra maintenance based on the annual service. And uh like MAU pays for the generator there, and they are a shelter. So it's just something I want the board to be aware of, uh I am gonna go ahead and have them repair it again. But I think it might be time to uh have the school pay for the generator, because we get no use out of it. And it's not a shelter, so we're never gonna get any use out of it. Just uh something out there, but I'm gonna have bookside service this one, but. It's just, it's been a back and forth with with the state and everything, trying to figure out who is a shelter, and. We finally, Paul Danson Row was finally able to get an answer from somebody that we definitely are not a shelter. Which I always thought we weren't, because we have no equipment to be one, so. I think we'll have to have a discussion with the school about taking this over.
Thank you.
I I think that that was given to the school, is that not right? That was quite a hassle anyways. I don't think anybody bought it, did they?
We paid a lot of money to have that installed, as I remember.
Oh, yeah, to have it installed, I don't think it caught the the purchase was was nothing, I thought it was given to us.
Yeah, I I don't remember, because like I said, it was essentially here when I got here, it was the installation part that that was going on.
Okay.
Can I ask if there is the updates um from the advertisement we put out for our town administrator? And has that gone out and anything happened yet?
That, well, yeah.
Yeah, they, it has gone out, uh ads been posted uh for a couple of weeks, there are, last I knew, twelve, we'd received twelve resumes. Uh actually, some additional ones that he was receiving through Indeed, which he's just treating s- uh slightly differently. But I think in hand, we have twelve resumes at this time.
Great, okay.
Good.
Several good ones have come in in the last few days, too.
Great.
It closes the twenty-ninth, uh I think it's important to wait to the end, uh.
Absolutely.
And then we'll be interviewing in February, was that our timeline, I can't re- quite recall.
Yes, it should be adjusting his original timeline to reality, uh the interview should start somewhere around the second week in February.
Okay.
And the first round, the second round, the first week or so of March. And then there's the offer period, the negotiation period, which will take most of, well, the two weeks that remain in March. And then the thirty days for the person to uh leave wherever they're from and show up here.
Okay, thank you for that update.
Okay. Okay, any other other business? How about action items? Uh I will. Get the towels town agreement signed as quick as I can and send it to Merrill. Uh is there anything else that required an action item?
The uh real estate, uh that was, oh, sign, you signed that Art or?
Yes, I signed it, I I signed it originally, and it came back with their two, the coal owner's signature, so that's a contract.
Okay, let me, I'll take that and put it in the file with the rest of it, it'll be on my desk. But you, I have a file for this on my desk, so.
Yeah, sure.
There, okay, cool.
I think we have to um send out that screening ordinance again, the right one with that added line. Just so that it gets into our packets for the next meeting.
Thank you, Martha, okay?
I know we had a question from Marlene as well, but I think we'd have to deal with that in an executive session.
That's right, that's what, that's what's, yes, that's right. So uh if there are no other action items, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Moved by Naomi?
Second.
Second by Martha, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, opposed, so carried four zero zero.